Welcome to the May 2 regular meeting of Town Niqwa. So we'll start off, if you've looked over the agenda, be it resolved that the council of Town Niqwa approved the regular meeting agenda for May 2. Move by. Councillor Gerard, Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, so then we'll move on to the minutes. Be it resolved that we approved the minutes of the regular meeting and the public meeting held April 18, 2023 as circulated. Move by. Councillor N'Golo, seconded by Councillor Kostinchuk. Questions? All in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, we'll move on to council reports. Reports.
April 22, myself, Jason, Marilyn, Colleen, and Jody all attended Doug Riffus', Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community in Minidosa. It was an extremely informative session. He stressed the need for communities, their organizations, youth groups, businesses to think outside the box, to change their thinking to be more forward-thinking in how communities do things or communities aren't going to survive. As he's worked all over North America and he's done studies on just about everything. So yeah, if you haven't had a chance to read the book, it's a very good read and there is a lot of information. And I think this goes down to what we've been working on with the community calendar and the Connected Community Organization meeting. He talked about organizations dying. They said, you know, they meet every Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month, sort of a thing, and the next generation doesn't operate like that. So they talked about how all of that basically needs to change if we want to keep these organizations moving and organizations need to amalgamate to continue. So yeah, it was just, it was a very, very big session.
All right, anyone else? Councillor N'Golo.
I've got a few items to report on. April 19, the day after our last meeting, we had a Westlake Board meeting and a couple of highlights from that meeting. We're able to help support a Class 1 driving training at the Westlake Employment Board, Employment Services Board. There's a nursing bridging course that's also running through us and that helps people access funding and get the qualifications needed in order to take nursing. We're also working with another course called Transportation Logistics and Supply Chain Management. So we're trying to offer more training to help residents in the town. The numbers of clients that we have continue to increase and by using the services, we're finding more. People are gaining employment, which is really great to see. So that upward trend from COVID is really good. Also, on April 19, there was a Westman, sorry, Western Manitoba Regional Library Board meeting. And a couple of the highlights, Niqwa was successful for $5,934 grant. And that was for the arts, culture, and sports. Some of it's going to go towards the public internet and to facilitate the enhancement project that we've been working on at the library. So it kind of covers all of that. On May 10, the library in Niqwa will be closed. All the libraries will be closed. They're giving a PD Day where they're doing training in Brandon. All the libraries in our region will close for the data to attend this PD together. We know minimum wage is moving to $15.30 October 1, so we're really trying to plan for that. We're looking at the different rent subsidies between all the different library locations in the region. At our local library here, after school, they're still offering Org Game Club and they're still with the new Baby Storytime program. It's really successful in our local library here. But there's a lot of e-resources that a lot of people aren't using. If you go online and use your library card, you're able to access newspapers from around the world, all for free with your library card. There's movies that you can access. You're allowed so many per day or per week, and that's to a hoopla. There's e libraries. You can access other libraries from all around the world. Amazing what you can find if you're doing research or if you just enjoy reading online. Also, there's an online storytime being offered through Brandon. So you can actually, because you're part of the region, you can log in and sign up to that. So you can do storytime, additional storytimes if you are really a storytime person. And we were able to, we're going to be getting a summer student that we're going to share 50/50 between us and Brandon. So that'll be good to help support us here. On April 24, there was a Yellowhead meeting. And just a couple of notes to share with council is the ICE is out, of course, and lacrosse and minor ball have been using the arena over the last few weeks. Coming to the Yellowhead on May 14 is the circus, which is going to be a real good treat for our residents. And on June 7, we have wrestling coming to the Yellowhead, so that's neat. On April 25, I was able to attend the Job Fair that was supposed to get our arts forward. And over 17 employers, it was co-hosted with Economic Development, Seminole Services, and Westlake Employment Services. So I went there to support the Job Fair overall and it was really well-attended. Many, many people attended our Job Fair. I think because Brandon didn't have their Job Fair this year, that this was one of the largest in the entire region and it continues to expand. So I think that's something we can really, we can really push, that we are the hub for the region, for this region, anyway. On April 27, I had a double meeting on Rosburn Subdivision Trail Association meeting at an AGM. And it was a really neat meeting because it was hosted here in Niqwa. And it was at the Bruce Brothers and it was well-done. An excellent meal. It was just, we really represented well in Niqwa, so it was really a great event and we were proud to host this AGM. And it was over 30 people from all the neighboring municipalities that are part of the trail system, all the reeves, marines, and councillors. And just everyone did an excellent job here and Niqwa really starred. They really shined. So coming in May, there's going to be a 50-kilometer epic run on the trail and that's going to be something that's running, starting around Rosburn and we're really trying to promote different events on the trail. At our AGM, Brian Holden was re-elected as chair, acclaimed. So other communities, though, are also, just like we are, they're receiving trail maintenance grants. So one thing that came across my mind is we always have the maintenance now at the bike park because of the water. I bet you because that has some of the trail, we probably can apply for trail maintenance funds for that. I was thinking, or more funds even. And we will be having a presentation coming in the next few months with that MOU that I keep talking about that's been on our books for quite a few years now. I'm almost done, a couple more. On April 28, the town was really able to help our locals soccer club that has kind of disbanded the league that we're having. And we're holding on to the town's equipment, which is a really good thing. Or sorry, not town's equipment, the soccer equipment. But we really want to help someone else to help bring soccer back and make it stronger. We need volunteers to do that. We need people that would like, that are passionate about soccer and would like to take it on. So we're really looking for someone to take that on, maybe a group of people that are, that would like to take that over. And I think we're the bridge they found where we can, we can share that equipment back with them so that they can run a really good soccer league to help give residents the ability to play soccer. So we really need someone to take on that and it would really help the community. We already have women's soccer league in our community and we have youth soccer, but it's that gap now between, between youth and adult soccer that we need to really refocus on. And there's a lot of good equipment and the former board is willing to help support whoever wants to transition into that. So that would be really good. And the last one, on May 1, there was a local library advisory board meeting and we started exploring the interest in the community for extending the hours of the library and possibly having weekends again. We're just in preliminary talks. We're going to continue to have the summer reading programs that we've had. We, can I get, that's it? N'Golo.
For the Nurse Bridging Program and the Class 1 course, where is being helped? And how do people apply and get started on it?
You know, Westlake Employment Services acts as the golden tree to help support people to get the qualifications that they need in order to qualify for the program.
Oh, but where is the program going to get out?
I believe the closest one is in Brandon right now.
Oh, and the Class 1, is that locally?
It's, it all depends on if someone is willing to do training here. About a year ago, we did train a few people here locally with thanks to using some of the local facilities. It just depends on the need and how many applicants we have. I think whether they'll bring someone up here to do it or whether they'll do it in Brandon, a larger center.
Well, I think if you could bring it out here, that would be good. That would be lots.
One thing we can do is we can help get support with their tuition and a lot of those costs get covered for the people that are interested if they, if they go through with it. And that's where this Nurse Bridging Program is really good, too. A lot of people that attended our session here in town, we had more, more people that wanted to take the training that's coming in our town. More, we didn't have enough spaces for sure for a couple of sessions if we were going multiple sessions. But this year will help those people that are deficit in what they need in order to qualify, what educational components they need. So this helps get it all lined up and then it helps with the tuition, too.
So you're talking about the LPM training or bridging from LPM to RM?
Both, both. So definitely, because it was timely to apply, some people didn't apply in time and a few people did apply and were approved to get support with their tuition for the LPM program that's being offered.
Okay. Jason.
Thank you.
Just have a couple of items. So for the training center that we've been doing, the old RCP detachment, the tender is out on Merx. So for any contractors who want to bid on that project, you got to be a member of Merx to get the information. At the clinic, the roof replacement is finished and they're going to start the county right away. But a big special thanks to all the surrounding RMs that support the Physician Recruitment Committee and thanks to Michelle Lewandowski, the office manager at the clinic. They were able to get Dr. David Abundo accepted by the Conn's Program, which is a two-year program. So in two years, we have another doctor. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? If not, then we will move on to the manager of operations.
Thank you, Mayor Heathie. So just, the setting part is that summer staff has started trickling in. We had a fairly smaller uptake on the applicants this year compared to prior years. So anyone that's still looking for work, they can contact us, we'll fill out some application forms. But basically, we had the first ones start on Monday and then as they're getting out of school, they're starting to show up. So we'll go through their training and orientations and get them going to their proper departments. Recently, we had a mowing tender issued out for local highway mowing, roadside mowing. So we're reviewing those applicants. Again, I don't think anyone met the criteria. So if anyone's aware of anyone else that may be interested, they can still contact us. So we're looking for any roadside mowing, so your larger schulte boers, roadside stuff, big brush marks, stuff like that. As Councillor Parrott indicated, the RCP tender for training facility renovation is out right now on Merx. So any parties can contact us if they're not too sure how to register the program. Or one of you just applied to see if you're interested in registering for them. That's fine. We bring a job site walkthrough on Wednesday? Thursday. Thursday afternoon there. We've also issued out the tower construction, so giving tower tender locally. Staff posted out and we'll be doing searches on that one tomorrow. And staff have just been busy wrapping everything up for some digs. So we've been requesting a lot of locates so we can start, start a bunch of projects.
Any questions? No, thank you then. Correspondents, go ahead.
From the Office of Drinking Water, just to let you know that we actually filed a permit application to do a water main extension that we extend to the new wastewater system. And we actually can proceed, we can proceed as a minor alteration of the water system and the issuance of a permit to construct altered system is not required. So that'll run along Pearl Road, connect based on what's there. Railway Street will extend over to the wastewater treatment facility. So just net YI, that there will be water connecting over to the wastewater facility as part of the main project.
Okay. Correspondents, that was all of us, correct? And there we'll move on to finance. And so for accounts for April, be it resolved that we approved the accounts for April 23 totaling $1,998,473.95 as reviewed and representing check 2023-00595 and 2023-0742, but excluding 2023-00632 and 2023-00723. So move by. Councillor Gerard, seconded by Councillor Pottinger. Questions? All in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, Councillor Gerard and myself will remove ourselves. Here we are, the resolution, be it resolved that we approved check 2023-00632 and 2023-00723 for April 2023 to Home Hardware and Niqwa Glass from Ola, totaling $9,072.88. I need a mover. Sisley and Kostinchuk, all those in favor, carried. Okay, so next is March financial statement. Everyone should have read, gone through that. Be it resolved that we approved the financial statement for the month ended March 31, '23. Move by. Councillor N'Golo, seconded by Councillor Sisley. Any questions? All in favor, opposed, carried. Cemetery database.
Some of this coming back to the table is old business because we've had a little bit of glitch in such that Resolution 2022-186 and 2023-11 actually approved the purchase by way of tender for the cemetery database software from Central Square. And then, of course, then proceeded with getting a mapping system from Lees and Associates. And then you're going to work collectively together. So when we got moving along, Central Square advised us that they were withdrawing and couldn't hold over and provide that service for us. So then, you know, without the database, the mapping's no good either. And then, of course, so that we didn't sign the agreement with Lees and Associates. So we were back to the table again. We submitted our tender packets again to find a new vendor. We were lucky and fortunate to actually receive four. So staff did participate in evaluating all those, coming down to two that we felt suited our needs and did some live demonstration sessions and pretty good staff participated in those. So the recommendation for council basically is that we accept, and this is the whole bid, we accept a bid of web cemeteries for an initial investment of $14,768, and that's US dollars. This is, but they do have an affiliate in Canada, is the only one I think that did. And then, of course, there's an annual maintenance charge of $3,588. And of course, once again, we are going to ask what we did before that that we purchase out of the cemetery maintenance reserve. So how much, maybe Jody can just comment on what she thought of the software.
It actually ended up being a cheaper price than our original vendor, also, not so, not so. And we really liked, and we each chose this. And we're going to have, which the other vendor didn't have, so we'll be gathering the best.
Okay, so the resolution reads, whereas resolutions 2022-186 and 2023-11 approved the purchase of cemetery data, database software from Central Square and mapping services from Lees and Associates, whereas Central Square was unable to fulfill the software obligation, making it necessary for administration to reissue a request for proposals for the purchase of the required software and services. And whereas, after reviewing and evaluating the proposals, administration's recommendation is to accept the proposal of Web Cemeteries to provide the cemetery database software, which shall include the management system, GIS mapping, data import for existing paper and Excel records, enterprise sales product, advanced public system products, and a customized Riverside Cemetery application from Web Cemeteries for an initial investment of $14,768 US dollars and an annual maintenance charge of $3,588 US dollars. Therefore, be it resolved that we accept the recommendation of the administration to proceed with Web Cemeteries with this expenditure to be borne by the cemetery maintenance reserve. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Sisley. Questions? All in favor, opposed, carried. Colleen, though you're into new business and a number of policies.
So you see three groups of policies, which under separate resolution, just because of the way they need to be dealt with. The first one, these are new policies that we're promoting. The first one being livestock and non-con compliance activities. This is a policy that's been dropped stage for a few years now. We just never brought it to your table for approval. And this is just to be put in place with everything going on in the world and people believing they have access to things or shouldn't have access to things. It's just to support us as we proceed as an employer, a significant employer in the Town of Niqwa, that we make sure that everybody, this employer here, understands, you know, what their position is in the Nimeo Sappalia and that they protect and look after the assets of the community. The second one you're going to see is for tile drainage. This was premised on the fact that there is an application coming forward at a future meeting for you by way of a public hearing to do a tile drainage project in Town of Niqwa. This is not normal for an urban community. It is normally done at Pearl's. So the policy you see reflects a combination, mostly that we used was Roseville that is currently existing over there because the water that is going to come from this project will actually enter into waterways into the arm of Roseville. So we felt that we also have to protect their interests as well. We've kind of vetted this application a little bit before we created the policy. I think it actually is deemed to be valid. It's going to be created by an engineered person that does drainage projects. So they'll be serviced by in this particular project. And but because we have no processes in place, our drainage bylaw speaks mostly to the urban development in residential areas. So this policy will be specific to tile drainage. Could it happen on one or two other locations? Maybe, but we needed a process put in place. Once you pass this, if you do so, or whether you want to table it and review it again, that's okay, too. But we will then request this proposal to go through planning board and request a various application, which will allow that application to come to the public for commentary. It will also go through the process of commentary from government departments, of which I've already obtained that from transportation and infrastructure. So we've covered all the bases here, but we need a policy and a process to get this application through through the system. So that's what the first set was.
Any questions?
Just comment, I'd read the tile policy that I thought was very well thought out. Especially the fact that it is, it does have to be performed by licensed applicators. It's not, someone can buy a tile project, go take on a project, then sell it to the community. So this is a good long-term protection. So I thought it was very well thought, mentioned, but, Robert.
Okay, thanks, Colonel. So the resolution, be it resolved that we approve the following policies. AD-060, theft, fraud, and non-compliance activities. And OP-075, tile drainage. Move by. Councillor Gerard, seconded by Councillor Pottinger. All in favor, opposed, carried. Colleen?
The second set of policies is just two. These are policies that there is no change to anything that occurs in the policy. All we've done is, as was known several years ago, we started this process. We just have a new look and a new numbering format. So these two policies, the first one being livestock preparing zones, we're just renumbering to OP-025, putting it in a new format. And the second one for moving buildings into town is just renumbered as OP-050 and, of course, in a new format. And that's all that's changed on these policies.
Okay. Any questions? If not, be it resolved that the following policies be renumbered in the current format. No other changes are required. PROT-001 now is OP-025, livestock preparing zones. ECO-004 is now OP-050, moving buildings. Move by. Councillor N'Golo, seconded by Councillor Kostinchuk. All in favor, opposed, carried.
And these last two policies, there are six of them. We're asking, we're actually asking for repeal of these. They are either outdated policy that are no longer required because as legislation and processes changes, they just, we don't read them, we don't look at them anymore. Or they're covered under committee reports or requests to CAO, depending on what it is. Or they're incorporated to an existing bylaw. So we have the emergency response policy that we are actually asking for repeal of. It is severely outdated. In fact, it didn't even have, we couldn't find any documentation to put it in place, but it existed, it was written in '93. We have, how reports come forward to council from the managers that was dated 2006. And as you know, we either bring information through myself here, do any reports on the zone, and then when necessary, staff come in and do the reports or report up through the respective committees. We have the council code of conduct, which by way of recent legislation has to come in the way of the format of a bylaw to make councils and the province manager understand that it is a little bit, there's a little more teeth behind that particular legislation. We have the communication for the agenda, this is dated 2012. It's actually incorporated into our organizational procedure bylaw. We have the cross-connection control policy. And this is a water and sewer item that is in our existing, most current water and wastewater bylaw. And the obstructed sewer line services due to tree roots, same thing. It's incorporated into the most existing bylaw for water and wastewater. So these are all big fields. We just want to be cleaning up the books. And when we're all done with this, there are more policies coming forward. We're trying to get ourselves right up to date and make sure that we've got this stuff right along the way.
Any questions? Be it resolved that we repeal the following policies that are either no longer applicable or covered under another existing policy or bylaw. ESNTL-001, emergency response. GOV-002, reports for council. CLUNT-002, council code of conduct. GOV-007, communication. UTL-006, cross-connection control policy. And UTL-004, obstructed sewer services due to tree roots. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Kostinchuk. All in favor, opposed, carried. So now we move into bylaws. First bylaw, Colleen?
So this first one is three two oh nine dash twenty-two. We gave first reading on April fifth of two thousand twenty-two. Following that, we, uh, there was a public circulation through the probation process, and then it was a public hearing. This is to, uh, do a map amendment to the Nipewa zoning map for about six and seven, Plan six nine nine one located in part of the northwest, twenty-eight, fourteen, fifteen in the town of Nipewa. And, um, just to get your bearing zone where this one is, this particular piece of property is known as developing this refer on Dominion Road by a man in a community and create housing for some of their elderly. So, uh, prior to third reading, the only chance we have to put conditions in place of registered development agreement against tile is hold off on third reading until we get that development agreement placed. Uh, last week, the development agreement was actually signed and brought into me, which allows me now to proceed to third reading and conclude the zoning on this property so that they can start getting their plans in place or to create that development. So I'm asking for approval of third reading of this bylaw.
Okay. Whereas council gave second reading to bylaw three two oh nine dash two two on May seventeenth, twenty-two, requiring the developer to enter into a development agreement prior to third reading, and whereas the development agreement has now been finalized, allowing for council to conclude the zoning amendment proposed under bylaw three two oh nine dash two two. Therefore, be it resolved that being a bylaw of the town of Nipewa to amend the zoning of what, six and seven, Plan six nine nine one, at five five three and five seven one Dominion Road, from M.H. industrial heavy zone to the proposed R.M. two residential mul- mul- multiple units, uh, two zone, be now read for a third time and passed. So moved by Counselor Sisley, seconded by Counselor Pottinger. And this is, uh, recorded vote. So any questions? Deputy Mayor Parrott?
Just for clarity, this is the property on Dominion, just where the old hash was used.
Okay. So recorded vote, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Calling three two two four.
Uh, so this bylaw, you gave first reading on April eighteenth, following the public hearing, to pass the financial plan for two thousand twenty-three. This is the bylaw you give second and third reading tonight so that we can actually impose the tax station for two thousand twenty-three.
Questions? Be it resolved that bylaw number three two two four dash two three be a bylaw of the town of Nipewa to levy taxes for the year two thousand twenty-three to provide for a tax due date and to provide for late payment penalties, be now read for a second time. Moved by Counselor Nigle, seconded by Counselor Costinchuk. Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. So now this is, uh, third reading. So be it resolved that bylaw three two two four dash two three be a bylaw of the town of Nipewa to levy taxes for the year two thousand twenty-three to provide for a tax due date and provide for late payment penalties, be now read for a third time and passed. Moved by Counselor Gerard, seconded by Counselor Pottinger. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Closing part of Commerce?
Um, so try and explain what happened here. So this is road closing bylaw three two three five dash twenty-three. In two thousand twenty-two, the town of Nipewa realigned the entrance into the yellowhead center, it lined up directly with Commerce Street that would exit basically across Mountain Avenue to the west. Um, in doing so though, we would have to close off the entrance that everybody had used over the years, that they believed they're traveling on Commerce Street, and that would be basically south of the yellowhead. So that particular, uh, access that existed up till last year was very irregularly positioned. It did not line up with the road grid from Nipewa as it was opposite of this house. So everybody believed it was road. So at the time of realigning that entrance and closing off Commerce Street, history reflected that this portion of the roadway had been closed previously as Harold Street, as had many other pieces along that section. Um, when we delve further, and so of course, we closed and realigned the entrance thinking it was closed. Uh, and you know, when reading further, it's, there was never a transfer done to actually transfer that piece of road over into the town as the bylaw suggests should normally happen. So, um, as we get looking through these, and Jody researched diligently, we even started connecting with the laws to get them to make sure they were seeing what we were seeing. So to clean this up and ensure that the matter has been dealt with properly, um, we, we took some time and actually spent some considerable amount of time looking into this, and Jody was very good at all this previous little detail. And, uh, we feel we need now, because we've realigned that entrance, we have to officially close it. It is not a road. It shouldn't have been a road. It is what it is, but let's get it off the plate and not pass it on to further administration. So we reached out Richmond surveys, and we had a planned survey completed, and we're asking for support tonight to give first reading to this bylaw, um, to clean up the files and complete this section. And following first reading, there will be a requirement for a public hearing as per what the legislation tells us needs to happen when you close a piece of road, and as well as the circulation of bylaw provincial departments and agencies. So, um, thank you for your support. It will become a law at some point, and you know, for future use of something. We just don't know what, but, uh, we want to do this right. Clean this up.
Any questions, Colleen? Pretty straightforward. Be it resolved that bylaw number three two two five dash two three be a bylaw of the town of Nipewa to oppose part of Commerce Street, Plan four oh three, in northeast thirty-three, fourteen, fifteen, and transfer that portion, uh, closed to the town of Nipewa, now be read for the first time. Moved by Counselor Costinchuk, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Colleen, fire protection?
Uh, so, you have to speed on this one as well. Uh, under the Municipal Act, every municipality in Manitoba must provide fire protection services within their jurisdictional boundaries. And for the purpose of providing fire protection services, a municipality may enter into agreement with another municipality for serving services on their behalf or to supplement existing services. So the rural municipality of Roseville has now expressed interest in supplementing their services in instances of major fire, a disaster, or other emergency, uh, to enhance the level of life safety and property protection in their municipality. Um, we've had discussions with them. We had actually, dating back to two thousand seventeen, to brokes this subject at the time. They were not ready to, um, you know, enter into that agreement with us. But we did, um, pass an agreement to do this with Northside of Langford, and we carry on to provide full service for them. This is not what that is. Uh, so they signed their agreement with Nipewa for the provision of supplementary services that would be triggered either when Roseville is unable to respond to or request for service, or when they have responded or intend to respond to an incident and contemplate that additional assistance will be required or specialized equipment will be required. I'm qualified with this, but there is such a thing as mutual aid out there. It will exist. It does exist. The thing is, we found, uh, a lot of small communities in Manitoba have trouble getting volunteers, have trouble getting those specialized equipment or, or having the fire hall capabilities, having the volunteer capabilities. So, um, we're proud to have a new fire hall with the trucks we have, with the complement of members we have. We have two sets of jaws of life. We have that ability. Um, we can do that. We can assist them. But at some point, when you, you go out into the rural areas and spend a little greater time, and what necessary is mutual aid, then there has to be some kind of a fee for service that comes back to us to compensate us for our services. So this is what this agreement intends to do. The agreement that will be attached to bylaw three two 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 dash twenty-three, which I'm asking for first and second reading tonight, outlines the criteria for the relationship and the required fee for service, and it takes into account the actual annual fire expenses incurred by Nipewa, including a capital replacement component, and is measured against the actual uses of fire protection services. So basically, we looked at as you use a service, you just pay that share of the pie, kind of thing. Uh, the formula then takes into consideration the service requirement on the whole of Nipewa and every call we attend in our area, as well as all of what each municipality actually was serviced. And then we look at the number of calls and the number of hours spent providing protection services, and the number of man hours involved. And why we use these three criteria is the fact that a large call in, in Nipewa could be a fifteen minute call. That's it. But we clock those at either a half an hour for the stand-in or an hour if they actually attend as height. If you go to a fire out in the R.M., it's a grass fire, sometimes you're out there for two hours. Sometimes you're out there with eighteen or thirty people. There's quite a difference. I can't clock that at one hour and call that fair. So when we look at evaluating all these different criteria and using an average of those, and then we took it and rounded over a ten-year period, because when you budget, um, the boroughs kind of need to know year to year what their budget might be so that they can budget properly. So that, um, gives an even distribution roughly of five hundred to a thousand dollars within the fee that we pay on that particular year. It's worked very well in Northside of Langford, and, uh, you know, it seems to be a formula that will carry for organizations in the future. It provides the stability from year to year. It's based on historical data. It's based on, um, you know, removing extreme fluctuations, and basically, who can argue you pay for what you use. Uh, to address issues related to fire calls for highway-related incidents, any associated revenue received through M.P.I.C. shall be directly appropriated to the fire reserve for the purchase of capital. And I'll explain this a little bit. So when we intend to, a vehicle accident on the highway, doesn't matter where we go, sometimes we're able to claim back a certain portion. It's only around a thousand dollars roughly to, uh, back to our fire department for services rendered. So rather than saying, you know, you should get that thousand dollars from Roseville, or, or Northside should get it, or whatever, we just said, rather than us taking it in general operating, we put it specifically into the reserve so that we can buy capital, which everybody benefits. So that's all of that. So to be clear, in the end, though, the basis for this agreement is to enhance services provided into Roseville. It is not intended to replace the services that they are obligated to provide under legislation. This does not mean they can slap it off and do less service. They continue with their service. We just, it's like an insurance. We're providing for them, and we will go attend, like we did today. It was a grass fire three minutes. Um, so first and second reading of this bylaw is on your plate, which will authenticate the agreement as well.
Thanks, Colleen. Any questions? Be it resolved that the bylaw three two two dash two three be a bylaw of the town of Nipewa to enter into fire protection services agreement with, uh, rural municipality of Roseville, be now read for the first time. Moved by Counselor Pottinger, seconded. Counselor Sisley. Uh, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Go right into the second reading. Be it resolved that the bylaw three, three two 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 dash two three be a bylaw of the town of Nipewa to enter into fire protection services agreement with the rural municipality of Roseville, be now read for the second time. Moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Counselor Costinchuk. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, and just before we wrap up, any other business?
Yeah, just a couple items. Um, number one, on the weekend, I was made aware of the fact that we had people using the new area for tennis courts that are gonna be built in June. We're using that for parallel parking practice and things like that. So we had vehicles out in that area. So we had notified administration. I see they've already got barricades to hopefully prevent vehicles, but just as a reminder for people that there's a parking lot in, use the parking lot that exists there for parallel parking, but to stay off that area that's being prepped for courts. But I think the more, uh, the parts of, the bigger concern is that one of those cars was also spotted doing parallel parking practice on the runway. So, uh, just as a heads up to the public, no vehicles are allowed to go onto the runway of any type, of any kind, except when they're in a sanction event, which is the drag races, which are organized without, with Transport Canada, so we don't have a case where a plane's trying to land where a car may be. Uh, and it was a resident who has a, um, a hanger who spotted the person parallel parking out there on the, on the runway. Number two, it's all the parking, the first one. Um, now that we're moving into summer, and that means it's great for seeing lots more people walking on streets, lots more kids out there running on bikes. Um, I actually had a resident approaching regarding the street, uh, Brown Street, uh, heading down towards the water treatment plant, noticing a little, a lot of high traffic, a lot of traffic going down there. Uh, but it's the speed of the traffic. They're using momentum of the hill. I know Counselor Pottinger and Counselor Costinchuk deal with those same issues, being at the bottom of hills and the speed traffic goes by. I think the one thing that's of interest, though, is on Brown. We get a number of kids going up to basketball courts. We see families walking across from Hillcrest. That is part of the TransCanada Trail on the east side of that lake. Um, number of times you'll see pedestrians walking down the middle of the road, and if they're coming over that hill at fifty kilometers an hour, um, it's, we're just begging for an accident. I know we even had a resident, uh, Mr. Burton, um, address that same thing regarding the pool. Um, the town, I know we are limited what we can do for speed because we're only allowed to lower it to thirty kilometers in school zones.
Well, the new legislation allows you to start looking at different things.
Yeah. I'm just curious if it'd be possible that we, I know we're also in the process of going through, uh, an act of, uh, an act for transportation study, but maybe looking at a few of these routes where we know, uh, have that traffic right now. Even just putting up some warning signs about kids playing, and something along those lines. Uh, the pool's gonna be reopening here in three weeks, uh, so we'll see pool traffic resume down those roads. Uh, like I said, along the TransCanada Trail, I've got a picture here that's got twelve kids walking shoulder to shoulder right across Brown, and all it takes is one car coming over the hill at, at fifty K, and we go to a serious incident that's gonna happen. So.
I live on Davidson, and I walk back and forth that going down to the pool is quite dangerous.
Yeah.
Quite dangerous. And, uh, we're seeing, our I'm senior, our kids with scooters and different things, they're starting at the top of the hill, and they're going down Davidson into that, the pool parking lot. And there's four white stops there, but not everybody uses those stop signs down there. So it's very, it's very dangerous.
Just even, like I said, even if we as a, as a community can acknowledge that there are some routes, and we see some extra caution signs put up there, um, just to be proactive, um, rather than us, you know, haphazardly changing speed limits on individual roads, um, just to take away some cautions and some warnings in some of those areas.
Can I ask any what signs would be available?
Uh, we put some kids at play somewhere, I think.
You know, like there's, some of the residents have commented, like, there's a silver four, a half tub, and three times a day comes flying over there, and they go, that's gonna be an issue. There's a, we, we know there's some common culprits, but I mean, hopefully we get some yield signs or some warning signs of some kind. Maybe we can just draw people's attention to it.
Oh, looks very good. Thanks, Counselor Gerard.
And would it hurt to post as well for the people walking in that? They need to do proper facing traffic and not phone light?
I've, I've got, I've got a photo of it, but I didn't want to put it out there. It eliminates people. But I, I've got the picture, and it's completely across the street. And you know, it's great. It's love seeing kids out using our facilities. I mean, that basketball court at Hillcrest is, yeah, the basketball bounces out there from closure of school till sunset, and I think it's fantastic.
I think for it to that, the, um, the traffic past our place for sure, and I guess it can pass yours as well, um, is predominantly not the work crews that are the problem. They go past our place really quite slowly. Um, and I'm pleased to say that, that it's not increased traffic because of the construction that's causing it.
That's good. Good discussion. Any other items? No. So, uh, be it resolved, council, the town of Nipewa can now adjourn this regular council meeting at, what are we at here? Seven fifty, fifty-three, seven fifty-three, sounds good. Moved by Counselor Costinchuk, seconded by Counselor Pottinger. All in favor? Carried.